Morning, everyone. Would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to welcome everyone who is in attendance here. We do have one council member online, Mr. Logan Cunningham. Mr. Glover will probably be joining us in a moment. Those of you who are online, welcome. Today is the first of two days where we're going to be conducting a budget workshop. Our agenda is for the county administrator to make some opening remarks, but I've asked the county administrator if I could go first to make some opening remarks. So I'm going to step from the podium to make these remarks. So, good morning, everyone. Today, we're going to begin our workshop, and I'd like you to see what I think we're going to look like in the next two days. Now, that thin guy isn't me because I'm not thin, but all of us are jugglers. During these next two days, working with administration, our council has to come together. We're going to juggle a whole bunch of ideas, and we need to come together as to the direction we're going to take. Our administration is going to make presentations to us. We need to understand those presentations, ask questions, so that we can come together. Our municipalities are already starting their budget process, so they're going to set goals, they're going to set their budgets, and we need to know where they dovetail and where they don't. And finally, all our citizens need to know where we're going. So, where are we going? What does it look like in 20 years? We look back 20 years ago, we were a small county, growing. Over the last 20 years, we've grown by more than 55%. So what does the next 20 years look like? Well, these are my ideas. One, I think the town of Bluffton is going to be built out. Two, I think the town of Hilton Head will already have been built out, but now they're no longer going to go horizontal. They can only go vertical. And what are they going to look like in 20 years? I think unincorporated Beaufort County will be built out. I think that northern Beaufort County is the last vestige that we have. That's what's going to be developed next. And so that is our challenge. All the major roads, there are five of them. They will have to be upgraded, more than likely we will upgrade them, because that's one of the major things that we're going to talk about here, is a transportation referendum to do that. Okay, so what is our responsibility in this process? When we came together the first time, I announced that council needs to ask, what are the problems and how do we solve them? That's what we're going to discuss today. What do we need to learn? That's what we're going to learn today. How might we need to change? Because we all came in with ideas of what we want to do this year and into the future. How might we change? And to whom do we need to listen? Certainly, we're going to listen to our administrators today of what they want us to consider. We are going to hear from our citizens, certainly. This is not a political debate. We're not only leaders, but servants. We expect to be, and our citizens expect to be, the leaders, to lead us into the future, that future that I think is going to happen. Finally, we need to speak out, we need to listen. And it says, we were elected by constituents in a specific district, but we represent not only them, we represent everybody. Everybody is our neighbors, so we have to take a look at what we're going to do there. So, how do we know what to plan? Well, we've coined the phrase for several years now, and our administration has embraced that, and that's how we're going to do things, live. We've got to know where people live. We've got to understand the types of housing. We have created a regional housing trust fund. What is it going to look like over the course of time now, as we continue to grow? Do we have enough types of residents? If the answer is no, how do we get them? Work, okay? People are coming here in the future. They need a place to work. Do we have the right places for them to work? Those are the several questions that we have to answer. By the way, you will all get this, so that you can review this. Over the next couple of days, this will be put on our website, so our citizens can see where we're going and play, okay? We need places for recreation. We learned, the compelling thoughts during COVID was people needed to get out, and that relief was to go to our parks. We learned a lot about them. We know what we have, we know what we may need in the future. Okay, over the next 20 years, number one on my list, maybe not yours, but number one on my list is the transportation referendum in 2024. We discussed it a couple of years ago and did not do that. We did number two, the green space referendum. We specifically set it up for two years and two years only to get $100 million. Now, we're going to turn our attention to transportation, because we have to get ready for the future. The Hilton Head Airport, the Jasper Port, the Board of Education. Education is extremely important. We need to work, because those children that are graduating from our educational system, we would love to have them stay here in our own community. Their parents want them to stay. Will they be able to do that over the next 20 years? And you can see the list. The list is plenty. I have like 25 different things. Last, but certainly not least, is SCAC, the South Carolina Alliance of Counties. They do county member training. I encourage all of us to take advantage of that. That's how we become the best boards we can be. So what are the plans that we have in place? Well, we do have plans that are in place. We have the Beaufort County Atlas. We have the comprehensive plan. We have the green print plan. We have the municipal comprehensive plan. We have the Parks and Recreation Plan. We have the Southern Ordinance and Design Manual. We have transportation plans. We have planned. Are they coordinated? Are they up to date? Are they realistic? As we look to the future, do we need to make modifications in them? And if we do, what are the modifications that are needed? And our facilities master plan. That's the one that we're talking about right now, okay? You will learn about what we need to do with our buildings. Take a look at this space. It was good years ago. It's not good now. It doesn't meet our needs. What do we need to do? And that, ladies and gentlemen, is why our heads are going to spin over the next couple of days, and it's that balancing act that we need. Thank you. Mr. Greenway, it's your turn.
Good morning. What I'm going to do is just introduce some staff members to you that some of the new council members may not be familiar with and what their role is. I'm going to start, not necessarily in any particular order, but I'm going to turn to my left here. You all know all of our ACAs. Their pinky area in the back is our CIP manager that assists Eric Larson with the development of the capital improvement projects list and the programming of that. Catherine Mead right here is our interim HR director, who took over for Scott Marshall once he left to go to the city of Beaufort. She will play a role, not necessarily so much during the retreat. She has been involved in the retreat, but the implementation of what you all direct us to do with employees. Right behind her is Whitney Fields, who is the transportation program manager that oversees all of our road transportation projects and our pathway projects. Over to my right here, you all familiar with Eric Larson, Director of Capital Projects. To his left is Brian Cronin, who is our budget manager. To his left is Denise Christmas, who is our finance director. And of course, you all know Hayes and you know Patrick. You'll hear from Patrick shortly about a big software upgrade we're going to have to do during this budget year. And of course, you all know Ms. Brenna and Ms. Brock. So anyway, again, it's always a pleasure for me to do this with you all and the team. The team here has done a lot of work to prepare for this over the next two days. They're going to give you a lot of information. It'll be overwhelming information at times, and unfortunately, it'll be boring information in a lot of ways, but it's important information because we're going to need your direction. So go into this with a mindset of there's going to be things that will happen in each one of your districts that we'll have to deal with during the next year, but this is to set the overarching goals for you all as a collective group as to the big things that you all want us to achieve for the county as a whole, not just necessarily how it might impact your district. So having said that, I'm going to kick it off now with Hayes, who's going to come up and go over revenue forecast and historic trends on what we've been seeing the last few years. One of the key things that you all need to consider is for the past three years, I think we've finished with surpluses. So we need your direction on how you all want us to deal with that. We'll make some recommendations to you. But Hayes will come up and lead the first part of this session. If you guys need a break during this, just say, hey, we need to take a five or 10 minute break, and we'll break. We didn't build those into the agenda, so.
Maria Walls is online, the county treasurer, and she was going to go over the growth in Beaufort County with y'all and kind of talk to y'all about values of a mill and assessment values, taxable values, and everything like that. Maria, are you online?
Yes, sir.
Are you ready to go?
Yes, sir.
I will let you take it away.
Great, awesome, good morning. Thank you so much for allowing me to present to you this morning. If you haven't noticed already, he's been at work very closely together, very well together, and Denise and Brian, so we're very grateful for their partnership. We're very grateful for their partnership. So, let's get started, because the reason this came up was the question of reassessment. Not reassessment, you need to ask the assessor about reassessment. But what I do have him offer is both historical data. So the first thing that I'm going to do is, I'm going to share with all of you. So hold on a moment. And I want you to think of a tax bill, okay? A tax bill is going to begin with, it is going to begin with values. So while you are discussing today, you're going to be discussing today. Sorry about this. Here we go. So you're going to be discussing this week, your budget, your spending, what's happening in the county and as Chairman Passman said. Well, from my corner of the world, taxes begin with values, which you have heard before. Values drive some less in tax. The assessor's office is going to value property, dirt and dwellings, and the auditor's office is going to value personal property, anything of the mobile homes that can be moved in Beaufort County. And then ultimately, it ends up getting a tax rate or a yield rate applied to it, fees, and then the total amount due, which is what we're pursuing. So I want to top Hayes' ass that I speak to you today about where are we going? So for the real property accounts, we're growing. If you get anything out of what I'm going to say to you today, we are growing, we're growing by leaps and bounds, and we're growing at a faster rate every year, especially since the start of COVID. So this is just the total real property accounts. Now, it is easy to add a vehicle to Beaufort County, drive it here, but you can't make more dirt. So when a property is going to increase, when you see this number increase right here, what this means is the assessor's office took a large piece of dirt and broke it up into smaller pieces. And you ask yourself, why would that be done? Most of the time, it is for development. So in the treasurer's office, when I see an increase in real property accounts, that means to me an increase in development. And you can see we have a fairly big jump here, okay? So I apologize for the short notice, but you should have received an email with a map in it. And if you didn't, that's okay, you're going to be able to look at it afterwards. The county is broken up, similar to council, it's broken up into districts. Well, for taxation purposes, we break the county up into geographical areas that we call tax, tax authority groups. So the ones that have been mentioned today already by Chairman Passman or the board, that's going to be the 100s to 400s. Then you get into the 500s, which is Hilton Head area, geographical area. 600s is Bluffton, and then you have 700, 800, DeFuski. So when you look at real property accounts, remember the division of dirt. That's what's happening here. Where do you see this growth? And I will tell you, this is not for the new council members. This is not the first time I've given this presentation to the county council, and I've given it to the school board multiple times. I update this data every month, and we can provide it to you whenever needed. But this is not surprising, right? You drive around, you see that there's a lot of change in Bluffton. Not a shocker. So let's keep going. Right there, that is the municipality of Bluffton. So 600, I just wanted to point that out here, 600 is unincorporated. 610 is the town of Bluffton. So now let's look at new construction. Remember I said, new dirt, new stuff to go on it. Tax year, I wrote a note here, TY, tax year, is not a calendar year. It is the span of time from the time the bills are sent out November 1st to October 31st of the following year. That's the year in which the treasurer's office has to pursue that collection. So you see some variations here. Tasker 18, we see a jump in construction. So this would be calendar year 2018 going into 2019. So we do see a jump, and then we do see a steady increase, especially for the last three years. All right, not surprised. This is tax year 2022, which is not complete, began November 1st. October, oh my goodness, November 1st, 2022. So now let's look at where this is happening. This is what I thought was interesting. You can see that it's not just Bluffton activity here over here now. You see Beaufort, you see Port Royal, you see Hilton Head, right 10. So, okay, now that's getting a little bit interesting now. Historically, and in Beaufort County since 2007, Bluffton was the place for growth, historically speaking. It's not looking like that's the case anymore. Now let's talk about transfers. And if you follow my line of thinking for just a moment, okay? Remember I said you can't make more dirt? No, I'm sorry, but there's no more dirt. You have to break it up in order to make more accounts, more property accounts. Well, that new construction, I mean, that's not, that's not an alarming amount. In comparison to how many people and rooftops have been proved in Beaufort County. So what happens when there is not enough inventory potentially for all the people who are on the move? They're going to buy that in existing home. Now, this is where you see CY's calendar year, every year since 2016. And then you get into the colder years when you see a significant jump in transfers, almost a triple of 2016. But that tells me, if I'm an expert in this in a prior presentation, if I'm the developer, wanting to develop in Beaufort County, I am going to see this, see that there is a demand that is not yet being provided for by the new, right, new homes, new construction. So, okay, definitely an increase, you see a decrease in calendar year 2022, may or may not have been attributed to interest rate changes. I definitely don't think we became a less desirable place to live. So this is where it gets good. And if you can't tell, I love data. Some of you were subjected to my excitement earlier this week. And this just tells our story of where we've been, so you can use it to think about where we're going. Everywhere is growing in Beaufort County, and this graph is what proves it. We're transferring property at an increased rate almost year over year, with the exception of calendar year 22. And I made the comment again, it's probably due to the interest rates. And it's happening everywhere, not just in Bluffton, in the municipality, not just in the geographical area of Bluffton, everywhere. Look at DeFuski. When you know things are transferring on DeFuski, you know Beaufort County is having a lot of transactions. You're going to look at Hilton Head, tons of activity there, almost at the same trajectory as Bluffton. And the remaining areas of the county are exactly the same way. We're growing everywhere, which reinforces Chairman Passman's open remark that Beaufort is going to be developed. You'll see it right here. So, in my mind, and this is scary and exciting. At the same time, we're growing, the demand is there, and the transfer is increasing. So now let's look at vehicles, and why do I bring this up? The large proportion of your tax revenue, the school districts' tax revenue as well, and every agency, is real property, it's dirt and wealth. But vehicles means people. That is why I'm giving you this information. So you look at fiscal year, I apologize for the different years. Fiscal year is going to run from July 1st to June 30th. But the end of the day, the year is a year, it's a whole month. You see an increase, okay? We've been growing county for a long time. It's the exponential growth that requires more and more care and management. Fiscal year 2017 to 18, okay? You see an increase, but now you keep going, and that increase is growing and growing. So for fiscal year 21 to 22, we increased by 16,000 vehicles. Keep in mind, not everybody has multiple vehicles, so there may be a household that has two, but that household has seven people. So just something to keep in mind when we're looking at people. So now, where were those people going? Everywhere. They are not just going to Bluffton, they are Hilton Head. There's just an interesting thing to know. When I started in the treasurer's office, the majority of property in Hilton Head were second homes. Very few, and of course, they are continuing to be that way until this day. However, most second homeowners would keep a vehicle at their second home. There is no other way to account for the increase of vehicles in those areas. It means people are coming here not to invest necessarily anymore, as if forefront in their mind, or not to be. Um, or not to, to be snobbers. They are coming and keeping a vehicle here. You're doing that, you, you, you're here. It's happening across the county. So again, reinforcing the fact that we're growing, we're growing at a faster rate. And this graph does not appear to be affected by interest rates. So while real property activities seem to be, uh, still going up. So now let's look at legal residents. Okay. When I began in the treasurer's office, the ratio of legal residents to non-legal residents referring to the exemption that can be applied for with the assessor's office, um, the ratio was sixty forty. Sixty percent of real property in Beaufort County was not receiving the legal residence exemption. Over the, over time, that moved to fifty fifty, and now that exceeds sixty forty, a complete reversal of where we were eleven years ago. Now, tax year twenty twenty-two is not finished because if that began, excuse me, that began November first of twenty-two. That year is not complete. So what you can see here, you can see here a steady increase, if not an overall, a continued increase year over year. I would expect to be by October thirty-first of twenty-three, this far for twenty twenty-two, to be just as high, if not surpassed, the twenty twenty-one tax year amounts. What this means is that these are, these are people who want to live full-time in our county. From a financial standpoint, this is a challenge for our school district as well as the other agencies, but the school district is impacted the most. So where is this happening? Again, there were very different, very different ratios in the past. Bluffton was the place to live full-time. Bluffton has continued historically had growth and growth of people who want to live there. The same can not be said for the other areas of the county. But now look what's happening. It's not just Bluffton. Uh, yes, six ten, right here, is having a far raider, uh, far higher rate of growth in the number of legal residence properties in the municipality in six ten. But everywhere is seeing an increase. And again, that brown line right there, the last line in each tag number. That year, we're just a few months in, the assessor's office is still processing these applications. I fully expect that bar to be higher if I were to present this to you in another six months. So with more dirt, are supposed to be created, there's more people, we have more new construction, we have almost more number of transfers, we have more vehicles, we have more legal residents. And so that's telling you a lot already about what you can expect, or what I believe you can expect in this upcoming year, especially in a reassessment year, but this upcoming year in general. Now let's look at total assessed value. This is by tax year assessed value. Remember I started off by saying value drives the best of a tax bill. This is the value of the startment. It is, these, um, values do include reassess, the reassessment values for prior years and any other assessed values by their assessor and the auditor. You see a significant change. Well, you know, a reassessment is not done every year. Why would there be such a big jump between taxure twenty-one and twenty-two? You may be expecting significant growth, but that's a big jump. The only other time I'm aware of, that you, the assessor's office is going to reassess or, or essentially no property, a dirt overwhelming, getting a new value is during the reassessment or when it's transferred. So you have an increase, an exponential increase in the number of transfers of properties in our county. Well, then you have that many more opportunities to reassess the value of the property. So I hope, I, I would expect at some point that you will be getting a presentation on the reassessment. But some things that we typically hear and are challenged by the treasurer's office is when someone bought a home within the past eighteen months, and now they get an entirely new value. It's not necessarily a bad thing, maybe their value dropped, I don't know. But because we've had so many transfers than we would traditionally have in the past, that could be a big, but manageable challenge that we experience this year. But it explains why there is such an increase in assessed value. Because the majority of that is these, those real property transfers. And maybe it goes to the other personal property in the county, but the big one, the big piece is going to be the real property. So now where is that happening? Again, happening across the county. Not just in Bluffton, not just in certain areas, across the county this is happening. And I think, um, what is most interesting, especially is the north of the Broad areas. When, you know, the more demand there is, if you know supply, supply and demand economics, the more demand there is, the more prices go up. Well, Bluffton has had a demand, Hilton Head has had a demand, and again, for different reasons perhaps, but I think it was most notable that Beaufort is going. And if I may be so bold to give you my personal opinion, I think anytime that an organization is dealing with challenges that have been dealt with in the past, whether by themselves or other jurisdictions. Bluffton's grown. What mistakes were made in the management of that growth and how can we avoid that north of the Broad? And now I'm just talking with Maria, who is your treasurer, but when I see this data, it tells me what's coming. And what happened in Bluffton, the growth, the build-out that Chairman Passman referenced, it is coming north of the Broad, it is coming to Beaufort and, and it, it's going to happen in the company right now. And so that was a lot of information. Um, I think this is the most relevant graph for what you may be discussing this week. Um, if I can give you some parting thoughts. This is a moving target. Your, um, your value of mil, which you will be discussing. So you start with a value for all the assets, all of what you're going to be taxed, taxed. And then you will find out, what is the value of one mil? How much can you generate in tax dollars by one milage? And then you look at your budget and determine how many millages, how many mils you need to charge to end up collecting the budget that you intend to, to pay for. So focus on the value and know that it is a moving target. It is not, there is no magic ball. There is nothing that's going to say, this is what it's going to be in August. But I can say that the closer we get to that end of the tax year, start of the new one, which would be November, the closer you get, the more accurate picture you're going to have going into the actual calculation of that tax. So there's a lot of information. With that, I, um, I am happy to answer any questions that you might have. And all of the data and spreadsheets behind those graphs I, I have here on my laptop and maybe I can pull up, you will see that as well.
Any questions for Maria? Maria, an outstanding presentation as usual. Um, every time you present, my head hurts because there's so much data there. But, uh, you, you did affirm what I started off with. We are growing, we're going to continue to grow. Uh, and so we, we thank you very much. Obviously, the presentation materials will be sent to each council member for you to digest. And if you have any specific questions after that, certainly Maria is always there to answer them. And we look forward to hearing from you in the future, but I'm sure.
Thank you. Um, and Chairman Passman, I will include when I spend the presentation, the slides from my previous one. So you will see where we were last year, right next to where we are today. I just didn't want to clutter up today's presentation.
Great. Thank you very much.
Have a wonderful time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can, can everybody hear me on this clearly? Listen, this is new to me, this whole concept.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and being elected by the people, um, help me with this too, as we get through this. And I want to make sure I get what we're supposed to be doing, but, um, I've heard from three or four people now, all the growth that's taken place, all the build-out, with all the plans that were going to be presented in two days.
Mm-hmm.
What safeguards do we have? Or, let's say Hilton Head, for example. Mr. Chairman, he talked about, we can't grow out, we're going to grow up. How do we protect the, um, do we have safeguards in place with these plans that Eric will present to us? That we're going to be able to protect, you know, the aesthetics that, you know, we love Beaufort County, right? Everybody came here for a reason. And I was a tourist for a lot, a lot of years. Um, and I think we're all blessed to be here. So as this newbie politician never had this type of role, coming in here on the mandate of, uh, our residents and business owners, how do we as a council protect? Um, how high, what are the ordinances for Hilton Head, for example, on buildings? How high can they go? Do we, do we know this? Is this part of what we do as a staff? So again, I'm trying to learn. So, you know, not only do I represent the people that elected me, but I'll be the best effective councilman for all of you here. Does that make sense? I mean, again.
It, it does. I mean, let, uh, Mr. Greenway start that and I'll, I'll add something.
And I'm sorry if I added a little twist to this.
No, no, it's great. It's a good question. It's a great question. I will tell you the answer to the question. Yes, there are things in place that helps us manage the growth, uh, for folks, um, in the county. All jurisdictions have them. Um, there are some historic issues that have occurred here in Beaufort County back in the late nineties and early two thousands that we're still dealing with. And those are, um, development agreements that rendered into that, um, allowed a lot of density to be built or was promised a lot of density. Development agreements are, is a way for a developer to vest their project for twenty-five or thirty years. Um, investing means that once that development agreement's entered into, they can implement those provisions in that development agreement without any changes underneath the state law or underneath local zoning or the needs and things like that. So puts a lot of pressure on staff. That's why I'm not a fan of entering into development agreements with folks. But when those were entered into back in, um, the late nineties and early two thousands, it was a different picture than, than it is here. Um, I remember as plan director of, um, Port County, I went to Bluffton for a conference, I went to Hilton Head for the South Carolina Planning Association Conference. And one of the sessions was, uh, there were two sessions that day. Come to Bluffton, the largest small, the largest small town in South Carolina. And what that field trip consisted of was me riding around in a bus for about two and a half hours, looking at a bunch of pine trees and very few houses. Okay? So that was, what you're seeing there now is a result of those development agreements. Same thing with Port Royal. Uh, we went to Port Royal and looked at an affordable housing project that they were doing there, uh, in late nineties. It was very successful, but Port Royal also, it was just basically back then, the old village part of Port Royal, uh, down near Eleventh Street and beyond, uh, toward the water. So yeah, we have a comp, we have the comp plan provisions, all jurisdictions have comprehensive plans that talks about the growth. You implement the comprehensive plan through your capital improvement product, capital improvement list and your zoning and development codes. We have the community development code here. So we have what, what commonly referred to as a unified development code. Some jurisdictions have a zoning code and a subdivision code. So all of those codes go into the, to laying out the growth strategy. Now, here's where the problem comes in today. Okay? And this is not a criticism, it's just the reality of the situation. Whenever you all are in meetings and whenever town councils are in meetings and they're hearing from developers and saying, hey, let me put all this density on this property. And there is nobody in the audience to speak against that. It's very easy for the politicians to say, oh, well then this one particular case, we can let this rezoning go and allow this density, uh, because staff made a mistake or they didn't do what they were supposed to do. So we're going to approve this rezoning because the people that bought the property really didn't know what their property was zoned or it got changed on them without their knowledge. So we're going to change that zoning in this particular case because, you know, there's no public here speaking against it. Then before you know it, that decision adds to another bad decision that adds to another bad decision. And we get in the position that we're in today with some of these decisions that were made by past politicians. So when we have these plans, it's important that we always follow those plans. Uh, because you have professional staff members in all jurisdictions that are skilled to lay out those plans for the best course for the public good. And I'll say this, and this is kind of a little bit off topic, but in this country, kind of since Ronald Reagan was president, we have trended away from doing things for the public good toward legislating on the last phone call. I deal with that every day. Cause an issue is important to one person, doesn't mean that's something that we should go change our plans or our laws or rules or regulations for one or two people. We have to do it for the public good. And that's where you all play an important role by working with the staff. So I know that's probably very confusing, but, uh, we do have plans in place to manage the growth. We are going to grow. There's nothing we can do about that. State of South Carolina last year was the fourth, fourth fastest growing state in the nation for new housing starts. For the first time in the history of South Carolina last year, we had more deaths in the state of South Carolina than we have births. The average age of the person moving to South Carolina is sixty-five years old. Uh, so, and then yesterday, the Wall Street Journal published an article saying that we're number one, Hilton Head, Bluffton area is number one uh, in the nation for luxury homes, uh, in, in the nation. So people want to come here, they want to live here. There's nothing you're going to do about that. You're not going to stop the growth. All we can do is manage it to make sure that when it does occur, that it's appropriate and we have the right infrastructure in place to support it.
Mr. Greenway, didn't, let me just finish with this then. You have new county officials that have been elected and we actually were out there crisscrossing this county talking about protect and preserve. Is it reasonable for us to believe that we can work together to do that? I mean, you know, we say one thing to the people that elect us, we come here, I, I think we need to work together. And again, my thing is that foundation, I'm going to read a lot, I'm, I'm doing a lot to catch up, but am I unrealistic in thinking that we can work together and, and protect the aesthetics and the people? And the second part is we have a lot of people that are on fixed incomes, right? So I know there's going to be a lot of plans, there's going to be a lot of wants and desires. But are we going to be able to protect those people that live here, that are sixty-five or older, that want to stay here and that are on fixed incomes and we're not going to catch them out? So again, all of this comes, I'm nervous, I'm scared that, I want to do my job effectively. So, and I want to be an, an effective member, but I want to make sure I know what, what I'm supposed to be doing.
Yeah, well, so, yes, there is, there, we can work together. But again, it's, the staffs of all the jurisdictions do work together. We need the, um, folks that are elected, that hold, uh, county council and city council positions to understand each other and be pushing and pulling in the same direction. Um, I mean, I, in your particular case, and I'll go ahead and bring it up since we're in the planning retreat, you know, we've got to, we've got to do a bridge across, uh, from Bluffton to Hilton Head.
Yes, sir.
We, we've had nothing but delay after delay on that bridge. That bridge is, something's going to have to happen with those bridges. They're structurally obsolete, they're structurally deficient and operationally obsolete. Um, and we're just spending more and more money to do more and more studies instead of progressing toward putting the infrastructure and meeting the needs of the public and the people who want to live here and come here. Second thing is, I'll tell you one of the things that concerns me most, and again, it is what it is, we will manage it and I will guide that to the best of my ability. But your comment about, um, people being able to afford to live here, I have that same concern, um, not for older folks, but for younger folks that come here, that work in our service industries and things like that.
Absolutely.
That's why we have set up the re- That's why we have set up the Regional Housing Trust Fund and all that. But one of the things that we just did as a county is going to be hard for me to manage, is we just voted to raise a hundred million dollars for us to buy open space. Those two things are diametrically opposed to each other. If we're going to take land off the table to be developed, that's going to cause an issue on the affordability aspect. Because again, it's basically going to be a slight supply and demand. If land's not available to add more houses, the existing houses are going to have a higher demand and the prices of those homes are going to continue to escalate. And it's going to be a constant battle for us to manage to provide affordability if we don't, if we don't. Hopefully the Housing Trust Fund is going to be able to assist with that somewhat. But all of those things, you know, it's all about balance. And if one gets out of whack with the other, then there's negative impacts.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you for letting me-
To what was said and what I said to begin with, it's the delicate balancing that we're going to have. I said, we represent everybody, the elderly, the young, the indigent, all of those. And what Maria said, there's only so much dirt. And we saw the growth, it wasn't new buildings, it was transfers. So more and more people are going to come. And as far as, you know, what I said with Hilton Head, they, they're done this way. It's only going to be this way. They're looking at that. How high can they go or how high do they want to go? We're not going to dictate to them. That's their responsibility as to what's going to happen on the island, but they're cognizant of the growth that's going on. So it's all of these things working together that will allow us to put a budget together knowing that it is budget one of multi-years dealing with this issue. Okay?
Thank you.
Hayes, please continue.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you all for having me today. I'm kind of going to go over everything overarching. Basically, I'm going to give y'all, we're going to look at revenues and expenditures, where we have been, where we're going, and, and where we should be. I was given three budget priorities for us. One is our, our, Beaufort County's most valuable asset, which I believe is personnel. Flat out, we can't get our job, we, we can't get what y'all want done unless we have great personnel. Two, repair and maintain Beaufort County's facilities, I think. The repairs and facilities of, of our, the repair maintenance of our facilities has been a footnote in the past. I think Eric Greenway's hired Eric Larson to, to get it up and running. We have significant needs. I, I don't want to steal too much of Eric Larson's thunder. But, but there are a lot of needs out there and there, there are a lot of capital needs and there, there are a lot of big numbers there. And then there are capital projects, roads, buildings, facilities, master plans, et cetera. A next one. I want to give you all this graph first. And this has, this is a breakdown of all of our revenues within the county. And it's for the last five years. And the, the thing that drives a bus is our property taxes and the value of a mill. And that, that is about 74% of our total. And that's a big blue blob at the bottom. And, and you can see it has gone steadily up since 2018. And you'll see that it declined a little bit in 2022 and you'll say, hey, that's totally contrary to what Maria just told us. And the reason for that is, is we took 4.6 mils out of the general fund and we put it to the enterprise fund. So that's about $9 million that we would have had in the general fund that would have been out there. But, and, and the, the other outlier is in 2018 and 19, we were still getting FEMA grants from reimbursements for Hurricane Matthew to the tune of about 27 million and about $7 million for, for one year and then the second year.
Hayes, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. For the new council members, that specific amount of money was the creation of the Solid Waste and Recycling Enterprise Fund that was before, was under the current operations. It's now its own enterprise fund. So that's why-
I'm, I'm sorry, I should have elaborated on that.
Significant event.
Right. That was a very significant event. So, so that pulled it out. So that's why it dipped. But if it hadn't, I would have thought that it would, it, it would have just kept on going. It would have kept going with all the transfers and everything that have gone on according to Maria's. If I was to guess, if you don't change the value of a mill, the, the property taxes are going to go up without taxing any further. So, you know, being a good accountant, I'm a nerd, I got to have my, my five years. So I got to, I got to have my schedule. I know Eric doesn't like schedules, but you know, I, I'm an accountant, I got to have my schedule in there. So this in there for y'all, that, that kind of backs up the numbers. But you'll see, you have 152 that million in 2018, 138 in 2022, but 26 of that was the FEMA reimbursement. So really you're only about 126. The rest of them kind of stayed flat. And, and it's set for property taxes. And there's another interesting thing that I, that I will tell you too. I think this is on the, this is millages, sorry. So when, when I said millages have stayed the same, they've stayed around the same. They're about, they've gone up about 1.4% since 2018, which isn't a ton. And half of that is referendum debt that was via the rural, rural and critical. So, you know, that, 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 that is not a huge swing over that time period.
Hey Hayes, question? In your previous slide, you show dropping the property tax revenue. Maria mentioned the same thing, but she also said that the tax year is not over. When do you end the tax year?
Well, the, the tax year, the, the delinquencies still come, that we have delinquent taxes coming in from prior years. The, the year really never closes. But typically, we're about 99% collected by the end of the fiscal year. So is, is typically where we are.
You're at 99%?
No, 98 to 99 is what I'm, but I'd have to ask Maria about that.
The end of the fiscal or calendar year?
Calendar. I see, fiscal, yeah, fiscal. I'm getting, I get confused, fiscal.
And back to your slide on the FEMA. That FEMA reimbursement was as a result of the hurricane in 2050.
Hurricane Matthew and all the cleanup costs. So if any of y'all were here, I mean, Beaufort County was a little more than a demilitarized zone with all the trees that were down. So anyways. Okay. But anyway, so this slide just tells you kind of where the property taxes were at 74%. The charges for services are 10% and intergovernmental revenues are 7%. I told you about the property taxes increasing the value of a mill because of all the transfers. And I told you about why it dipped and why, why, why the driving factors is. One thing I wanted to go over as far as charges for services, one thing that was interesting was in 2021, we lost $3.2 million worth of funding. I don't know if any of y'all know what that was. That was the Hilton Head Island, in the town of Hilton Head for the sheriff's fees. But what filled that bucket up was the register of deeds revenue for all the transfers. So although we lost $3.2 million, the register of deeds kind of filled that hole. Now, if the market, if, if the economy turns and it goes down, you would see those fees recede some. And, and I don't think we'll get the 3.2 again, but we have the Hilton Head Island Services and a special revenue fund. But I thought that was very interesting. Uh, the state's subdivisions next year is going to be 8.3 million. And I would suspect the home sit exemption will be from 2 to 2.1 million. Next, we have our expenditures. And these are general fund expenditures and I have them broken out by, by their category, by personnel services, purchase services, supplies, capital outlay, subsidies, others, contingencies, other expenditures. And they kind of look like they've, I, I want to look particularly at personnel services because it kind of looks like they've went all over the place. And one reason in 2021 was when we, we did split out the Hilton Head Island Sheriff in, in their, in a separate special revenue fund. That was around $4 million. And in 2022, we implemented, uh, we, we implemented some other things which I'll go on later on in the slides. But, uh, the, the, the reasons it is, is, but, uh, those are expenditures.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Subdues to others, can you define that?
Uh, yes, ma'am, and I have a slide on that. It's, uh, so it's, it's our payments to higher education. It's our payments to Beaufort Memorial Hospital. It's our payments to Beaufort Jasper Comp Health, LRTA, Island Rec Center. We have, it's about 10 to 11 million dollars. I have a slide that splits out all of them. Some of them are based on millages, some are just flat amounts. But I, I thought it would be very helpful, especially for all of the new council people to actually see what they are. But anyways, so, but, uh, yeah. Then if you ever look at the audit report, it's broken down by government function. And this is governmental operations and it has it split out by the category. And I'll kind of just run through these. Public safety. What works? Health. And these are for three years. Public welfare. Cultural and recreational. And this, this slide I, I looked at and had to do a double take. It kind of threw me for a loop, cultural and recreational, because I was thinking parks and rec. But that also has a higher education in there. So that's why that subsidies other is so big. So you're like, why, why would that be so much? But libraries, parks and rec and the higher education. But, um, anyways, Beaufort now, Beaufort County personnel increases. I want to give you all kind of a background on the personnel, what we've done over the past three years. In 2021, that budget, COVID-19 was hit. The bottom was falling out. We didn't do anything. We just kind of held the line. In 2022, we implemented the Evergreen Solutions Classification Study and Comp Study. And in 2023, we implemented a 5% coastal living COLA that we actually did before the end of the year. We did it in May of 2022. Then let's see, then the special pay that we've had over the past three years, we've had three PTO payouts. There was approximately 812 in '21, 775 in '22, and 839 in 2022. We had the ARPA payout of $3,000 per employee. And so Beaufort County has been very generous to its employees. Where will we go for personnel? And, and I might want to seal Catherine's under, she'll go into this. Uh, there's a possibility of COLAs merit pay increases, step increases, but that'll be covered in her presentation.
This is a key- This is a key component of what we're going to want, a direction from you all. Uh, we have a lot of vacancies in the county. Uh, some of that is due to what we're able to pay folks as a minimum starting salary. And we're having trouble competing. At the City County Managers Association's meeting a couple of weeks ago, Frank Rainwater, that you are familiar with, who did our redistricting for us, basically said that it used to be even in recession that there were always people available for every job in the area. But now government's having to compete with private folks because currently, for every job that's vacant, there's less than one person statistically available to fill that job. And we're having to compete with private enterprise. And if you're dealing with younger folks, trying to recruit them and hire them, they're not really concerned about benefits, insurance, retirement, things like that, not important to them. They're talking about, you know, where do they work? Can they work remote? How much time do they have to work? How much time can they have off? You know, flexibility of schedule and their hourly pay. So those are things that we're going to use some clear direction from you all as to what you all want us to build in, in the budget, coming up in the next session. Sorry, Hayes.
Mr. Chairman, can I say a question? Did the county fully implement the compensation study? I mean, I, I was on library when it was done. And where were we with that?
We did fully implement, however, that study is now over two years old.
Yeah.
It's time to be reevaluated. We will do that internally on the two-year mark. And every four years, it will be done externally. So Catherine can speak a little bit more to that, but we did fully implement. It's just with inflation, the way that it is right now or all your ages, people are having to work extra hours just to pay for the exact same basket of goods that they did a year and two years ago. And, and I'll talk a little bit about that with Catherine. We're going to tag team the personnel piece. And I'll pull up some statistics for you guys from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. But that'll better illustrate to you some of the difficulty that we are having when Chick-fil-A is hiring supposedly at $15 an hour, gas stations are at 15 and 16 lows. So it's a tough environment, as Mr. Greenway said. Usually the recessionary periods are fantastic for governmental employers because there's the concept of long-term job security. But that is not the case anymore. So it's a difficult environment at the moment.
And I agree, younger people, they don't want to hear about all the benefits as much, other than medical. But they want to know what are they taking home in their paycheck? Because that's how they're living every day with their children.
That's right.
So we get it.
And the last key component is the one that we're struggling with now, and that's housing. If you do not have affordable housing where you work, you're not going there because it takes too long to get to work. And you factor all those in and that's part of the problem we have.
There, there's one thing I want to bring up too, that we haven't really dealt with since 2020. Um, in the past, we had transferred money to DSN and Alcohol and Drug to supplement their, their operations. And it was, uh, the last transfer that we had was in 2020, it's $3.8 million. And COVID, we thought the whole world was going in and, and thank God it, it didn't. But it changed the way things work. But we've asked, they, they had about $5 million in fund balance and we asked them to use their fund balance. And, and they've done that for the past three years. It's looking like they're going to need to, we, we want, this is something that we're going to need to fund again and it's going to be an additional expense. And right now, uh, just to fill the hole from the past couple of years of what their deficit was, would be around $2 to $2.5 million. That, that's just to, just putting all the cards on the table, letting y'all know ahead of time. This is the subsidies to others, and this is just out of the general fund. So we have some that are millage-based, which are the higher education payments to the Technical College and the University of South Carolina Beaufort. And then the Beaufort Memorial, the Beaufort Jasper Comp Health, they're also millage-based. Uh, but you can run through this list and kind of go through it. The only thing that's really not on here is the millages that we have for the job and parks. Because it's, it varies on, it depends on what projects Economic Development Corporation has going on at the time. And Hank will be going over that with his presentation. But as you can see, we have projected almost $11.8 million going out at the end of this year. There may be things that y'all may want to increase, decrease. But this is just to kind of let y'all know, especially the new people, where, where a lot of the money is going. Anyways, the big thing to talk about is the capital and, and, and the, and the maintenance. And we have been, in this past year, we've been using a lot of fund balance. And we have, we have, we have had carryovers. And we've been using a lot of the carryover for, for capital. And we still have cap, we still have fund balance that we can use. It's not as much as it has been because we've been using a lot. But the, these capital projects take time and a lot of effort and they're not quick solutions. And so we, we're, we can fund some of these with that. That, that's going to be one, one use that we're going to be able to fund with that. Also, uh, we need to look at all of our funds that we have out there with, with special revenue funds and see if there are applicable uses that we can use some of this funny funding and, and tap into it and to get some of these projects done. There's some bond proceeds that have been out there for a while. And we're going to relook at those and see if we can reclass those. And then to fund all these projects, there may be issuance of bonds. But look at the master facility plan and the Parks and Rec's master facility plan and the Boat Landings Park. $93 million in, in the 8% geo-bonds. It, it's going to be tough to get everything done. I mean, we, we got a lot of stuff coming up out there. So, um, but- So but that's really all that I had. Do y'all have any questions for me?
We will print out that special revenue fund piece when we go to break here and the personnel piece and see you all have the historic number to walk down with. And that accrues stations whenever we. But it probably didn't take a break.
Yeah.
Going to the last.
Great, thank you, Hayes.
Thank you.
And for council, once again, we're not going to be able to solve everything this year. This is the beginning of a master plan that we have to have year over year. You know, we have eight people that are going to be here for the next four years. Our other three people will be up for election. We need a game plan. What are we going to do for the next four years as we progress along this 20-year travel route? Okay, so let's take a break. It is 10:05. We'll come back at 10:20. Is that acceptable to everyone?
Yes.
Okay. 10:20, we're back from break, and we're going to move on to our budget priorities for 2024. Mr. Butts, good morning, how are you?
I'm good, sir, and you?
Ichidandyneedokee.
Great, great. So the personnel piece, we talked a little bit about at the end of that last session. And to talk a little bit more about it is our interim HR Director Catherine Mead. Mr. Greenway introduced Catherine earlier, but she's been with the county for 10 years and two different HR directors during that time. So she has taken the reins herself now and doing a great job. And I know will continue to do a great job. She, along with our Deputy County Administrator, Ms. Richland, will be tag teaming on this personnel piece, compensation and benefits. Is that where we are? Okay, I want to make sure I'm right. All right. So we talked a little bit about this, but you're very much aware of the challenges that we faced over the last two and a half years in this in this particular area. We've had retirements within the organization, employees who just decided not to return past or post the height of the COVID pandemic, an overall challenge and filling vacant positions that we spoke of earlier. But there have been some tangible things that we have done to combat those challenges. Among those, the ARPA payout, the 5% cost of living adjustment last year, this year, actually, the sign-on and retention bonuses offered in our public safety areas. So all of that will be discussed and some visions, goals, and just general thoughts shared on that critical piece of personnel. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Mead.
So we, I've given you two sheets of paper. For those of you in the room, Logan, we're going to be emailing you Hayes' presentation. It's got the personnel chart on it and the payments to outside entity chart on it. Those are going to be things that we'll continually discuss over the next few days. So.
Good morning.
Good morning, Catherine.
Okay. I'm going to, well, here we go. I'm going to start with a little agenda just to overview what we're going to cover today. I have statistics on our current personnel. It's going to include our current staffing levels in addition to our vacancies, our turnover rate. And I'm also going to highlight our retiree rate. I think that's a new number we need to start thinking about. We're getting into the time period where we have folks that are transitioning out due to retirement. So we'd never really focused on that right prior in prior years. But I think it's very important from here forward, at least for the next five to seven years, that we. at least for the next five to seven years that we are zoning in on that number as well. I'll also talk to you about some vision and goals with HR and with administration for the whole county. Some of those will be recruitment and retention, obviously, those are our number one priorities. Increasing our employee engagement and then going over some of our benefits. And then we'll go over the roadmap of how we get there. All right, so I want to point out that the current personnel data that you are about to see is fresh as of two four. As you know, this is constantly changing, every week the numbers change, so keep in mind this is as of two four. And what I've done with our staffing levels to compare our vacancies versus our staff positions is broken out by division throughout the organization. So the first division I've highlighted is our finance division. And within the chart, you'll see each department that falls under that division, along with how many current employees they have. And then the green bar will dictate how many vacancies they have. Okay, so a brief overview on the finance division, there's a total FTE count of seventy-six point five. Please be mindful that position number versus FTE is gonna be different because you have two part-time positions that's equivalent to one FTE. So if you're doing some quick math as you look through my graphs, that is the difference in the numbers. The current turnover rate for the finance division is six point one five percent, and again, this is from July one through two three. So we're only looking at about seven months of the year. And the retiree retiree rate is twenty-five percent, so twenty-five percent of the ones that left us were due to retirement. We talked in previous years about healthy rates for retention and turnover, ten percent of a turnover is you're you're knocking out the par, you're doing great. Over twenty percent will, in an HR world, throw some red flags and we probably need to kind of figure out what's going on and approach those issues as needed. Anywhere in that ten to twenty, we're okay, it's not that we don't want to let it out of sight, but we're okay. So I wanted to point those out to you, as you're going through these numbers, you can understand where we're falling with that. The next division we have is the development and recreation division. And just like our finance, you'll see the chart broken out the same way. Parks and Rec is probably the one that stands out to me the most, we have sixty-nine filled position, but we do still have twenty-five vacancies there. If memory serves me correct, most of those are recades and lifeguards. The total FTE count for this division is one hundred and eighty-six and the turnover rate is at nine point four-two percent. And the retiree rate is five point eight-eight percent. Next, we will go over the infrastructure division, which includes our engineering, airport, special projects, and public works. The one that probably stands out most to you is our public works at thirty-one vacancies. Our total FTE count here is one eighty-three with a turnover rate of eight point zero-two percent. No retirees from the folks that have left us in public works thus far this fiscal year. Public safety, this is, as you've heard in previous years during this retreat, where we are critically low. And we we've got to get a handle on this, get some staff in, keep them in. And we have some plans to help get us there that we'll be sharing with you later this morning. But right now, the detention center has fifty-seven staffed employees and they have thirty-two vacancies. So again, very alarming for our detention center. Our EMS is doing actually better, yeah.
Could you say that again?
They have fifty-seven staffed positions right now and thirty-two vacancies.
Fifty-seven, there are thirty-two empty?
No, sir, they have a total of eighty-nine positions and fifty-seven are staffed, thirty-two are vacant. EMS actually has improved over the past few years. You know, we've implemented some extra pay when they get double overtime, I think that's been been helpful. Of course, they also are eligible for, as Dale mentioned, the sign-on bonus. So I think that's helping bring people in, but it's still a number to keep in in the forefront of your mind because we don't want EMS to get any higher than what they are with their vacancies.
Chairman, can I just ask a quick question, going back to EA, the detention center? As relates to employees, that's almost a third of the employees not there. What kind of stress is that placing on current staff?
Yeah, absolutely, a lot.
So is that a area of of high priority for us to try to do something with and are we doing something about it? Because, you know, it has always been a problem with the detention center and they came before us before and said salary was an issue. We kind of did something with salary, so is it's... Yes, sir, you understand what I'm asking or trying to ask?
So Catherine's probably gonna allude to this when she goes into her next slide, but we've done all we can do with the detention center and EMS as far as pay and recruiting or retention is concerned. Now it's time for administration, me, to start looking at other areas of concern that you all could sit there and probably imagine what those areas of concern would be when you're looking at those types of vacancies in those two divisions. We just hired a new public safety assistant county administrator. And he and I and Whitney will be looking into those that situation in more detail and be implementing things once we do that, once we do that work.
Any other questions so far? Let's just do a high-level overlook on our public safety division, so we have a total FTE count of two twenty-three point five. We do have a turnover rate of thirteen, right at fourteen percent and a retiree rate just under seven and a half percent here. IT and communications division? Sure. IT and communications division, this is inclusive of your IT department, GIS, records management, your PIO and your broadcast. And here we have a total FTE count of forty-six, we do have a turnover rate of twenty percent here with zero retirees. So as I mentioned earlier, above twenty is when we're really getting concerned, but I think right now it's it's a much smaller department, so of course that factors in, you only have forty-six FTEs. But I think we're okay, we are working hard to recruit, I know Sarah's stepping in for us with the PIO piece as we actively recruit that. So I anticipate this number to improve before the end of fiscal year.
So this is, so this, in my opinion, just so council's aware, is a combination of two things. One is a combination of the flexible work environment that's offered in private with IT. Folks have to come here and do work so they can be working on people's computer, but if they can sit at home and work for a private IT company, then that's more attractive to a lot of the folks in this bracket, in my opinion. And then the other reason is is that we have had some personnel issues in one of those divisions that we have recently began addressing.
Yeah, this is not unique to us, this is a nationwide trend in IT, just as you said, they have different ways of working in IT.
Right, yes, sir. Great, our community services division, the one that probably stands out to you here is our DSN. And again, this is just a much higher level department, it does require a very unique skill set. We do have people that come into this job and after six, eight months, they just may realize it's not for them. So, you know, as far as a personnel issue, I'm not not aware of any issues there, I think it's just the nature of the job here. Your overview look on this is one hundred and fifty-seven total FTE with eighteen point two-four percent turnover and seven point six-nine retiree rate. Then our newest department, capital improvement, so we have the capital improvements who also oversees facilities. Newest division, rather. So the total FTE count here is twenty-six, they've had zero turnover since July one. And administration. We have only one vacancy, that's in the legal department. And I believe that's gonna be the most recent county attorney we put on for the Greenspace, Penny, so we just started recruiting for that.
Do you think the work environment in the administration is much better than every place else, nobody's leaving?
Well, I mean, everyone's here, I'll let them speak for that. So our elected officials, I I bunched them together, so I'm sorry, it's a very busy chart, but I did put them all in one. Overall, they're doing pretty well as far as their staffing levels, the sheriff is your biggest one, but again, we're talking three hundred and forty-three positions of those as of Saturday, when I pulled the data, fifty-two were vacant. Five hundred and twenty-nine point five total FTE counts for all of our elected officials. Turnover rate is at seven point three percent with a retiree rate at twenty-seven percent. So we are seeing a lot of retirement happening, I would say mostly in the sheriff's department. Yes, ma'am.
Retirement rate for the sheriff's department, is there a mandatory retirement age for sheriffs?
So for law enforcement, they are members of our police officer retirement system through PIBA. I believe, Ms. Howard, it's twenty-five years service to to be eligible for a full benefit.
I don't think there's a...
Right, there is a mandatory, but they have levels.
You're bested after...
After twenty-five years, they're eligible to retire. So that's usually what several of them do is retire from the police force and go into some other industry.
Sure. That's a high retiree rate, that's why I said...
And I do believe most of it is in the sheriff's office. Here is just a high-level overview, pulling all the slides together we just reviewed, we have a total of one thousand four hundred and forty-four FTEs. A total of fifteen hundred and twelve positions. And then I've also broken that out for you to have a visual of how many part-time, I think that's been a question that's come up recently, we have one hundred and thirty-six part-time positions. I will also note on those part-time positions, I think roughly, I believe, five or six of those part-timer with elected officials. The remainder of that balance is with the county divisions. We do have a total vacancy count of two hundred and fifty-two. The average county turnover rate is ten point two-four percent with the retiree rate is just over seven and a half. That just gives a high-level overview of where we stand currently with our personnel. We're gonna go a little bit into our vision and goals. Obviously, one of our top priorities is to be the premier employer, we've heard all morning about growth, people are coming to Beaufort County. We want to be that forefront employer that people want to come work for. So we are gonna work on recruitment and retention, we have some ideas going with that. We're also gonna talk about competitive wages and make a couple proposals for you to think about with COLAs and merit. We have also in our HR department just hired on a workforce development specialist as a individual that's gonna oversee a new program for workforce development. That's very key to invest in our current staff, get them on a, you know, path that they want to get to because we want to promote and foster an environment that we promote from within and we are helping upskill our staff and also a healthy workforce. How do we get there? I'll start with the recruitment and retention piece. You may recall recently, our previous HR director coming before you to talk about the NeoGov system that we have now purchased. Our team in HR is working with them on implementation, we expect to go live late spring to early summer of this year. And this is a recruitment and onboarding software program, so it's gonna allow our staff and HR to be more proactive in recruiting. The current applicant tracking system we have now is is a little stale and not very user-friendly. So this system will also allow our staff to put in keywords for what what we're looking for, what skills we're looking for, and then we will be able to find resumes on file with this system and then we can be proactive in reaching out to them and letting them know about our positions. Because currently, we're just crossing our fingers and hoping that the people are gonna come look at our website. We have broad widened our cast net of who all we're advertising through, we do it through Indeed. We talk to departments and go out through professional publications in their field. But I still just don't know if we're hitting the the population that we need to be hitting. We are also working currently with administration and legal on forming an internship program. I think it's important to partner with our local schools and provide these on-the-job training opportunities for our students. Whitney had mentioned earlier, it's time for us to do an internal classification and compensation study, so we are working on that. I'm currently working with administration, including all of our ACAs, to get with their departments and tell me where where are we struggling? What are the positions we need to go out and do another market survey on? And I'll tell you, this go-around, we are going to market survey not only other local governments, but private sector because that seems to be where we're hitting a brick wall with the competition on the rates. I think Eric alluded a little bit to this previously, we're going to also work on doing some climate assessments. It's just as important to do stay interviews than it is for exit interviews. So that is gonna be a priority for our HR office in the next fiscal year is to get out to our departments and do climate assessments. With that, I'm gonna let Whitney come in and talk about the next couple of slides.
Good morning, everybody. So one of the ways that we do want to retain our current employee workforce is to do another cost of living adjustment. I said before you last year and petitioned you to consider the rising inflationary environment that we're in, that has not changed, unfortunately. I'm gonna go through a couple of statistics for you on the next slide, but first, just for those of you who aren't aware, we often refer to CPI, Consumer Price Index. What is that? Basically, it's the measure of an average change in prices over time in a fixed market basket of goods. So things that you need to live on your day-to-day basis, right, food, clothing, shelter, transportation. In other words, it means it measures the changes in price required to maintain a given standard of living. So this year, we're doing, we're proposing a combination of a COLA and a merit. And just below that, you'll see that we are proposing a three percent COLA, but for the southeastern region, our inflation from December of twenty-one through December of twenty-two, that's the most recent data we have at this point in time, for our region is seven percent. Now, that southeast region does, taking account, you know, South Carolina, Florida, Georgia, Alabama, Mississippi, there are several states that are included in that southeast region, but overall, for all goods, not seasonally adjusted, is seven percent. Food, I'm sure you guys have seen it, I put eggs on there for a reason, has anybody seen the price of eggs lately? It's insane, so groceries overall for our region over the last December to December twelve-month period increased twelve point six percent, takeout was eight point two. Energy, overall, five point eight, drilling down into the details, electricity approximately increased fifteen point seven percent for our region. Natural gas, nineteen point four, and then gasoline, four point one. It says it decreased for this period in December of twenty twenty-two, but we know that it rose again here recently in our area in January. Shelter, and we've hit on this several times, a recurring theme in our county and in the region is going to be housing. Shelter overall increased to nine point six percent, the rent of a primary residence was eleven point four, and the owner's equivalent is nine point four percent. So this COLA that we are proposing does not exactly keep pace with inflation, but we are hoping that with a combination of a COLA and merit, we will be somewhere close to that seven, we're proposing three and three. This proposed COLA would be available to all employees, both full and part-time, regardless of department or division. And that would include the employees of elected officials as well and the elected officials themselves in accordance with our ordinances. And in case you're really curious about these numbers, I've put the website there at the bottom for the Bureau of Labor Statistics for you to research later if you want to know about any other categories. But before I move on, are there any questions yet, Mr. Glover?
What COVID basically has caused a lot of this increase in in inflation, that's not gonna last forever, so we're gonna, America's gonna get back on production. Egg price is gonna be coming down, milk is gonna be coming down. A lot of it is really the supply and demand at this time, that's why they, you're probably looking at a seven percent increase. But over time, it's gonna level off, so I'm I'm I appreciate, you know, three percent, because I think that's really a very good number to put out there and stuff, but yeah, I'm not too alarmed, but about seven percent, I, you know. I can tell you that at some point in time, Romaine lettuce was selling for almost ninety dollars a box. Normally it sells for twenty-five, it's gonna get back down.
We certainly hope so.
Sarah, this might be a good time if you pull up that website.
Yeah.
The same site that I pulled this information from also has a rather neat calculator, again, for kind of us mathy geeky nerds in the room who like statistics and numbers. If you go to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, if you go to their website, one particular tab has this inflation calculator. I've put $100 in there. It used to be, for a family of four, I could go to Walmart and buy groceries for the week for $100. I can no longer do that. That same $100 from January of 2022, in December of 2022, so roughly a year later, that $100 is now $105.57. Sure, $5, but when you're working at $8, $9, $10, $12 an hour, you're having to work almost a full extra hour before tax just to pay for the increase in those groceries. So, yes, we do hope that it calms down, but in the meantime, we've got to do something to help our employees, because as we mentioned earlier this morning, they are looking at that take-home pay. Retirement is great. Health insurance is fantastic, but they need to pay their bills month to month. All right, I'm going to go to the next slide. Thank you, Sarah. All right, there we go. So in addition to the proposed COLA, we are also proposing a merit increase of up to 3%. And this is very important. The reason why? Let's just say you have a department full of performers mixed. Some are very high-performing, some are kind of just doing what they need to do to get by, maybe others not even performing at all. And we need to implement some kind of corrective action for them so that they start performing at the level that is expected. When you merely do a COLA across the board and everybody gets the exact same thing, that is a good way to kill morale for your top performers. We need to do something that will continue to incentivize them to perform. And so because of that, we are also in tandem proposing up to a 3% merit increase for our employees. And each of these we are proposing would be effective with the first full pay period in July, so that it is implemented at the beginning of the fiscal year. Again, this would be available to all employees, whether full or part-time, and would be available to employees of elected officials. Are there any questions about this slide?
Can we just go back one slide?
Sure.
You have the COLA at 3% available
July.
To all employees, and also to all elected officials?
Yes.
But the next one is just employees of elected officials?
Yes. I do not believe that as administration, we have the authority to evaluate our elected officials. That is done by citizens through the form of reelection. So we are not in a position to, let's just use Maria, for example, earlier since she prepared. I believe that Maria does a tremendous job in her area. Fantastic. Very intelligent, very proactive, very innovative, always willing to partner with our staff for anything that we need. Were I in a position of authority to evaluate her performance, she would absolutely have my stamp of approval for that 3%. However, I am not in the position to do that for her. That, I believe, is something that council can adjust through our own ordinances, which establishes their salaries and compensation bands.
And we do, there is that kind of provision each time there's an election, because with some of those elected officials, like the treasurer, the auditor, clerk of court, every time they're reelected, they see an increase in their salary as a result of being reelected.
And how is that controlled? What statutes?
I can't, I don't know if it's a state statute or a local county statute. Something in my head tells me it's a state statute that controls that, that we have no control over, but I will confirm that and let you all know before the day's out.
I have that code section I can provide to you.
Is it a state statute?
I believe it is.
I know there's a county ordinance, there are three county ordinances that give elected officials the reelection bonus, but I didn't know there was a state statute involved that superseded our ordinance.
We will certainly find that out and confirm.
And with the proposed merit increase, you will have the specificity so that an employee knows exactly what the criteria is?
Indeed. You actually are segueing right into Catherine's next piece.
Very good.
Yes, thank you for that question. Currently, we do have a performance evaluation system in place. I will say that our leaders with the county, we need to get some more training available to them, and we plan to do so. So it's not such a subjective process. They know the criteria and how to properly assess their employees and how to have those conversations with the employees as well. But then that also does lead us into our workforce development. And this is a perfect opportunity when we are training the staff to go over those expectations, to go over the competencies that we will be reviewing them annually in their performance evaluation as well. So I think that covers that piece. But this workforce development program will be much more than that. It's going to be training opportunities for all staff to include our leaders. We did have a leadership retreat back in August, and I think it was a wonderful event. We've heard very positive feedback on it. It would be nice to see those type of retreats continue on. But your workforce development will be a little more lower level, getting down to smaller groups of people, and focus on certain areas that we're hearing that is either desired or needed. It will also be inclusive of our compliance training that we have to go through whether we like it or not. And then it's going to provide some upskilling opportunities. So as I mentioned earlier, we want to promote a foster, or foster an environment and promote growth. We want our folks to stay with us. We don't want them to just put a dot on their roadmap of, these are all the jobs I've had. We want you to make this a career with us. We want to see you in that retiree rate when we talk the same presentation 10 years from now. So in order to do that, we want to have that pathway for them to get there, to get into the desired positions in which they are hoping for, and to also help with succession planning, because we are getting into an era where we're going to see a lot of retirees come out. So we need to have staff in place that's ready to handle that. And how to do that is through a learning management system. It's going to be a wonderful tool for our workforce development specialists to utilize and to lean on. So we'll probably have more information on that as I'm still gathering some things to bring to administration on that learning management system and the details of it.
Can I just ask a question? You know, I am not a opponent for merit pay. I think it's a great program. I think setup on paper, structured, it's really great. But there's a lot of subjective evaluation in a merit system. How do you prevent, how do you monitor that? And I guess that's probably the best question. You know, to make sure that objectivity is being done versus
Right.
a buddy-buddy system.
Exactly.
Yeah.
No, you're right. Absolutely.
How do you evaluate to see whether you have more buddy-buddy happening than people who deserve or should get a merit pay is not getting it because whatever reason?
Understood. So there is a safeguard in place with the performance evaluation system, where it doesn't just stop at the buck with that first level. We can route it up to multiple levels of management to make sure even your ACAs are involved, your department heads are involved, to ensure this is not happening. And again, going back to the training that we need to provide to our managers, to give them the layout of how to proficiently complete an evaluation. And then also, we are considering the factors right now that's going to be evaluated on to make sure that they are clear, measurable standards that we can appropriately rate them on more objectively than subjectively.
And are you the person that would be reviewing that to make sure that the supervisors are doing their tourist job of giving merit pay?
Yeah. So, I mean, one of them. We are a very small department, and we are, as we taught, we have over 1,500 positions. But yes, we will work with the management to make sure if there's any areas that we need to go in and look at specifically, we will be glad to do that for them.
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes, please.
So Catherine, two questions. One, I'm used to your evaluation form because I did the library director.
Okay, yes.
I'm not a fan because some of the categories didn't relate to her particular job and put us as trustees in a box to, okay. But the second question, learning management system, is that what I'm used to, a set of modules that people go through? They're basically PowerPoints with scripted whatevers?
So it's twofold. It will have the content, the library content of the training videos, but it's also going to have a roadmap for employees and managers to work together on, to upskill them, to guide them. Where do you need to focus? Which videos do you need to focus on? Because there's over, I think, over 3,000 content in there, and we don't want to just throw them in and say, here you go, figure it out. So the learning management piece of it is going to help roadmap our managers and our employees to where they need to go to meet their goals. And to follow up on your first question, it is customizable. And again, I think bringing our managers back in for some training on that specific system, we will unveil that to them, because you're right. I think this year, we're going to probably kind of keep it condensed because we are late in the year. But going forward, we can customize the competencies per position, because they're not all the same. You hit an excellent point.
I would imagine when you're evaluating, you know, somebody at the detention center who's the supervisor, it is not similar at all to what the library director does. And to put them in this box, I mean, it was a little difficult for the library director part, but I could just imagine across all of your supervisors, it just
They're, yeah. It's very rare you'll probably find two identical. I mean, every job is different and has different expectations. And the current system we use, and I'm not, you know, saying we wouldn't branch out and look at other systems if that's the desire of administration, we can certainly do that. The current system we have, though, it does have over, I want to say, 200 competencies as it stands. When we first rolled this out in 2015, it was just, okay, here's a good core set, and it never really lifted off like it should have from there to expand it to customize per position.
And I think to Mr. Glover's point, when you do, when I did the library director, the most important part of that evaluation are the comments. It's not just to check the boxes. It was, what do I really know that she does? What are the competencies that really shine? And what are the weaknesses that need to be addressed? So it's really, going back to his point, what the supervisor does in that evaluation piece.
Exactly. Yes. In fact, part of the training we will roll out is, you are not going to just check off a box. I mean, you have to provide feedback. Otherwise, you're just, you're pushing papers. I mean, this needs to be a meaningful process. They need to understand the reason why behind we do it. It's meaningful not only for administration and leaders, it's really meaningful for that staff, especially if you are those high performers. They want to hear that, you know? And of course, they want it supplemented with a reward, which is usually monetary, right? They want that feedback. So just checking a box, you scored a four for whatever that competency is, is defeating the purpose. Yeah, exactly.
Catherine, workforce development, training opportunities, is it reasonable to say that there's still a concept of team building as a, something that is taught to inform people of what other departments are doing so we can increase collaboration and cooperation?
I'm glad you brought that up.
Team building, something that
Yeah. So that is another area. With, backtracking a little bit on the NeoGov I spoke about, there's a piece of that for onboarding to help our staff out to make that first day of employment, if not even stretching into maybe their first month of employment, depending on their position, to have the opportunities to network with, understand the structure of the county, understand who your potential teammates are that are in your division or another division, even go locate the facilities. We probably have some new supervisors and managers here that aren't even aware of what all is a county facility. But for team building, yes.
Onboarding wasn't my concern. It was more for veterans who are here, who may not be fully informed on what other people are doing.
Sure.
And when they are then fully informed, it may cause a greater sense of collaboration and cooperation.
No, I think that's an excellent point, and that's something we can work into this training opportunities.
That's just my suggestion. I mean, I'm not saying you should do that. I'm saying you should consider it.
Sure. Thank you. Any other questions so far? Well, the last one. Some wellness events. We want to inspire a healthy workforce. You may be aware, you may not be aware, we currently kicked off our first county fitness challenge, a step challenge that started, I want to say, the second week of January and is slated to end next Friday. We've had a lot of response for county employees. We've set them all up and through Microsoft Teams. They're chatting with each other every day. They're networking. They're planning their lunch schedules to go walk around the complex together. So it's really not only promoting healthy fitness, but also just the camaraderie with our staff. We would like to see more of those events throughout the year. We will continue to provide, as we always have, our onsite clinics for vaccinations, to include flu and T-DAT vaccinations, vascular screenings and mammogram screenings. And then we are also building, forming a relationship with Beaufort Memorial to come in and talk with staff periodically, whether it be monthly or quarterly, and hold 60, 75-minute health seminars. And also, there are some other plans with administration with bringing on some more help to really beef up and go the next level with the wellness piece for the county.
When you're doing all these things, do the people who are the employees who are participating in the onsite clinics, I'm assuming they all have some kind of health benefit from their employment. What if they declined to accept that? How do they fit into that offering of screenings?
We still offer it, or it's just going to be for all counties, whether they have our benefits or not.
Okay. Any other questions?
We'll ensure you get a copy of this slide deck. It was a lot of information. And my contact is on the last slide for you if you want to follow up with anything.
And I will say one thing that's probably what we're going to be discussing this afternoon when Mr. Larson presents his capital projects. One of the things that we have to be cognizant of employee retention is where they work. Do we have a safe environment to work in? Are we supplying them with the proper tools to do their job that we expect them? You know, we've seen offices where they're cramped in, and to do that on a daily basis is a grind.
Sure.
And that's part of the problem that we may have. We're scattered all over the county.
You're right.
And so, you know, to go from place to place sometimes is difficult, so.
Yeah. I've been working with our risk manager a good bit, and I have some plans to get that more involved with making sure we are going out to our facilities and doing the assessments we need to do and making sure we're all in regs with that. But yes, you're exactly right. Thank you.
Catherine, I was going to walk out with you, but I'll tell you it's a W for question, that's all. So I'll give you
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Cunningham.
One of the beginning slides that you brought up was exit surveys. How confidential are those going to be? And that question comes from one of the questions that raised on the school board and school district is, they do exit surveys, and they say that, at least while I was teaching on my last, they said they were confidential. But yeah, I would get an email with them telling me, are people that read them, say that, hey, why haven't you tried this then? Because clearly, they weren't confidential. If people were saying that, it hasn't been that, it hasn't been, or why did you answer it this way? So the question, how confidential are these people going to be able to do exit surveys? Are they comfortable giving an honest answer if they don't get blackballed in future jobs?
Sure. A couple of points on that, and I'll start with your latter comment here, is when we have to do any sort of verification of employment in HR, we only release the dates they were employed with the county, the job position they held, and their salary if that's requested. We never release reason for their exit. We don't even classify people as rehireable. So that kind of covers that. But we do, we're very upfront in our exit interview process from the get-go that it is confidential. However, just like anything else that comes through HR, if you are going to bring something to me that's going to raise our red flags of, you know, illegal activity, or things that are really not good for the climate, we have an obligation to report that back to the administration. Of course, it will stay at a high-level confidentiality of how many people this gets out to, but we are upfront with that in our exit interviews. And it doesn't seem to put a hinder on our folks giving us information. But you also have to realize that even whether they want, they believe it's confidential or not, some people are still not going to give the information. And then you also have the other side that's really going to just have their way with it and sling a lot of information out there that's been, you know, possibly occurring over the last 10 years, because now it's like, they feel like this is my opportunity to get it out before I leave. So it is, it's a tricky area, and it has to be handled carefully, but we are as upfront as we can be when we conduct these interviews.
Yeah, I completely agree. I mean, my thing is, we just want to make sure if we do have a problem that we're combined with in a certain department, and nobody wants to give an honest exit, we can't figure out what that underlying issue is, or it takes us too long to figure out the underlying issue. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I don't even know whether it's weird to ask this question, so I'm going to throw it out there at this time. When we look at retention of employees or maintaining benefits for employees, have we thought about or looked at bringing back retirees? Have we thought about it? Are we Are we, no thoughts on that? Okay, I'm just throwing that out there.
We have thought about it.
Thought about it.
I have asked about it, and I've been told that it'd be too expensive to do it. And if you all want us to evaluate that and give you a report.
I would love, I would personally love that. Because I think it's a benefit that we should offer our employees who have been with us and who may think that it's better for me to leave now so that I can have that benefit with another company that's being offered. I'm just throwing that out there.
We will, we will, we will do that report. I would caution you all to, that if we do that, and it seems to me that there needs to be a time to restart that so that we're not, we've compensated the folks that were retirees that lost that benefit. So if council would be saying, okay, well, we're going to go all the way back to those folks that got paid out and going to start their benefit again, then I would recommend against that. But if you want to start it for retirees for the last year or so, for people that have not benefited financially from that provision through what you all have asked us to do with the payouts to retirees, then I would, we can evaluate that. But if we're going to go back and allow people to benefit exponentially over other employees.
I'm just one council member. I say that I would love to see the data on it and stuff, but.
We'll give you the data.
I'm just one council member, that's all.
Well, the council members who have an interest in that, you're, me being the other one.
Yeah, we can do that for you. It's not, it's not an issue for us. That would be relatively easy for us to put together.
You only take that through to Medicare age? Is that the cutoff with the continued?
Sixty-five, I think.
Would that be the way you would set up?
Yes. So this is for y'all's opportunity now to provide us feedback with regards to, unless we hear differently, we're going to proceed on with building in a 3% COLA and up to a 3% merit. And Councilmember Lovera, I share your concerns about merit. Performance evaluations, in my opinion, are an ineffective way to motivate people because those folks that benefit from performance evaluations don't need them because they're always evaluating themselves every day at work. Those people that need the performance evaluations the most are the very people that think they should get fours and fives and sixes on everything just for showing up to work on time. But the way a performance evaluation works is if you come to work every day on time, you met expectations. That is not a five or anything else. So most employees do not realize that. So it can lead to that disgruntled issue saying, well, that person got more than me, and I'm doing the same thing that they do. It's a perception issue for the employee in a lot of cases. But we need to train our department heads to make sure that we're doing that. There is a process in the performance evaluation process where an employee file written statements to ask for reconsideration if they feel they've been marked too low in areas to support what they can do, or superiors to evaluate that with the department heads. So.
Let me make it clear that I am not against merit.
I understand that.
Yeah. I think it's a good tool to use. However, we got to make sure that it's not subjective and it's done, you know?
Yeah, I didn't mean to imply that you were against it. You know, I just, I'm not a big fan of them either, and that's what reason why we haven't used them. But I keep hearing more and more folks is that we, from department heads, we'd like to have the opportunity to.
I am from the South, and, you know, we're a good old boy system in the South, man, so.
Yeah, I understand. I got that.
Ms. Greenway, you say you're going to put this proposal together and come back to us?
On the retirees or on the?
No, on the 3% and 3%.
Yeah, that'll be in the budget that you all will start reviewing sometime in April, May.
Will they lump together as one item, or will they be two items that can have a separate vote?
There'll be two items. We'll have to, we'll have to budget that money differently because the merit is going to be more of a target.
So that line item could be struck if there was a vote. In other words, each item would be the subject of a different ordinance, or is it one ordinance?
No, it's one budget, it's one budget ordinance with line items for those picker items, just like you do every year with the adoption of the budget.
Okay, so if there were some objections to the merit program, that could be isolated, but the COLA would also be separate.
That's correct.
So, Mr. Greenway, would there be a cap on the amount of money that's allowed for the merit program?
Yes, that's where, that's where Hayes and Denise come in to tell me what the ultimate number will need to be.
So that's the amount available, but doesn't necessarily mean the amount that will be spent because it's dependent on the evaluations.
That's correct. That's right. The other thing we need to do.
Logan's got his hand up there.
Oh, why not?
Logan, go ahead. Question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I might be the only one, but I do have my reservations about both of them, to be honest. One percentages can be taken by different levels. For example, we just had this discussion a couple of months back. 3% on a $50,000 salary is a lot different than 3% on a $150,000 salary. That's one of my concerns. The other issue, I was just going to, the same reason, the same thing that Eric brought up earlier about housing market, the more we continue to increase, the more that the cost of living is going to continue to catch up. Anytime they raise it, something else is going to raise the other end because people know that they can. So my question is, when, at what point do we say, okay, we need to figure out other ways to make this work? And I'm not saying I have the answer, I'm not saying I would vote against it. I'm just expressing my concerns. And to be honest, nobody wants to say it, I will. It sounds like we're chasing Washington right now with whatever inflation's coming down the pipe, whether it's from COVID, administration change, whatever it might be, anybody can point the finger. But we're the ones stuck paying for that. I do have my reservations about when are we going to put it into that? Or when are we going to come up with a different solution? Because we're going back to that now. I do want to be competitive to other counties. I do want to have the best staff in the state. I think that we owe that to our, it seems to be the counties I have no problems with, you know, the raise, or maybe the raise of salary and COLA, however that be fit. But I just want to, you know, express that, that at some point, when are we going to stop chasing the sales? Because I feel like that's what we're going to do. Long run, we should keep spending more money and continuing to fight the exact same problem. Money doesn't always fix problems. Thank you.
I'd like to piggyback on Logan's comment. In this merit increase area, there's dangers associated with that, and you're pretty much pointed them out. But in a merit increase program, there are very specific ways that merit can be recognized when employees are performing above expectations. And I always wondered why we never had that here in the county. And that deals with special achievement awards and sustained superior performance awards, where people can receive not only recognition in the form of a certificate, but they can also receive cash awards in varying amounts that don't affect their salary forever, but they are cash awards that are given on occasion as merit is discovered and rewarded. And I always wondered why we never were able to have special achievement awards with categories of cash and then sustained superior performance awards, which are even more. And that comes into the concept of step increases and everything else you were discussing. But I think as a start, that may be something that could be implemented pretty simply. But then again, New York, it's left up to the supervisor to recognize that. But then it would have to go higher than just supervisor to probably two more levels. And what they did with those kinds of awards back in the day when I was actually working somewhere was they had a, they had a special, they had a special, it was a committee of employees. And all of these awards went to that committee. So there were five or six people making a decision in reviewing what the submission was by that supervisor, and they passed it through the committee, and that's the only way it was granted. So it wasn't left just to one person. It was put to get, it was put before a lot of other people. I always thought that was a great way to recognize people because it's not at a particular time. It's when you see something that deserves recognition, and it can happen anytime during the fiscal or calendar year. So I recommend that you give some consideration to perhaps implementing a program like that, which I found to be during my term of service to the federal government, to be something that people responded to more favorably than just getting an annual increase or COLA because you were actually taking time to recognize it for something they actually did at the moment they did it.
It's a great suggestion.
Which was good feedback.
We'll look into that. Another thing that we need to consider as well is some, you know, kind of menu of benefits that employees can choose from. And if they don't take our medical insurance, then maybe they get, you know, more per hour that are paid because we're saving a lot of money in that particular case. So, or they might be able to forego medical insurance for more accrued time or whatever. So those are the types of things that we, you know, need to evaluate as well to make sure our benefits packages are aligning with actually the desires of the workforce today.
The more we talk about this, the bigger the project becomes. I'm afraid it will never be implemented if we keep building and building on it. Maybe we can isolate the things that can be addressed in the short term and then other things that could be addressed in the long term.
We will.
Mr. Chairman, do we give our employees a, I mean, everybody gets a W two, so they know what they hypothetically made last year before the government took everything out. Do we give our employees a compensation package view? Because most people don't understand how much the medical benefits cost or programs, whatever. Do they get the full compensation package? Not that it's going to make them feel jumped for joy, but it is part of their compensation.
No, it actually, I'd like to think it will make them jump for joy. I mean, it really is a big picture. We contracted out a company to do that for us several years ago. But in one of our Munis retreats that we recently went to, we have discovered that there is a capability in the current HRIS system that we use that will allow employees to go into their employee self-service account and see a TCR, a total compensation report. And we actually are working on testing that right now in our test environment to push that out, and we'll announce it to employees because it is a very big picture. And it really puts into perspective how much the county is investing in me, especially when we're talking about their benefits. Because you all know, we have the best competitive rates for the employee for their premiums with our benefit package. But sometimes, unless you put it in front of the staff, they don't really understand that. So yes, we have that capability.
We do it in our HOA, and when people saw how much medical costs the employer, and they understand the give and the take, but I think it is an important thing to give our employees.
Absolutely. Yeah, and look, stay tuned. I'm hoping by spring, we'll have that pushed out to staff.
Thanks, Catherine.
Any other questions? Good lively discussion.
One of the big items that you all will see in the budget this year that we have purchased in the way of software is the update to our property tax software. It's called AUGMENTUM. We're way behind on that. That will come at a price tag of $3.7 million over the next three years. There'll be at least $1.2 million in this year's budget to begin the implementation of that upgrade to our property tax software. One of the other things that we're going to be planning to do, Catherine alluded to with regards to personnel, is employing a health and wellness director to have onsite exercise classes. People want to quit smoking or go on a diet. This person would be designed to help them find the resources to be able to do that. It's hard for parents to stay in time to be able to get their kids up, get them to school, work all day, then get home, get their kids out of school or to practice, and then get home and cook and do all the homework and things like that. So my plan is to have this wellness director be able to implement programs so that we can release employees either early in the morning or midday or in the early afternoon to be able to participate in some exercise classes or yoga classes or meditation, whatever we deem is appropriate or a menu of things that would be appropriate to make them more fit because more fit employees help with our experience rating for medical insurance. That's an ancillary factor. But makes them more productive, makes them happier, makes them healthier. And happier and healthier people is good for a society and our workforce. So that'll be another thing that we will be looking at implementing here shortly. And then at some point, we're going to need direction from you all on what you want to do with the surpluses that we've had. That's something that's concerned me for a couple of years now. You all just heard in this year's CAFRA that we had a $15 million surplus again. That is not all free, that is not all usable money. I can, I can feel Hayes and Whitney getting all nervous over here on me because I'm in dangerous territory by talking about financial stuff. So anyway, she may need to help me out here. But one of the things we're going to be talking, need to talk to you all about is what we're going to do with the millage on a rollback and possibly doing that rollback and rolling that over into capital purchases because we have needed the surpluses that we have had to do capital purchases. So Whitney, you're a Hayes one, got anything you want to add about that?
I can summarize as well. Some of our surpluses have been attributed to the fact that we budgeted for capital items and projects that we weren't unable to complete within a fiscal year. Capital is the majority of the outlay, other than your personnel piece, right? It's not supplies and materials and even professional services that can be so costly. It's your capital outlay. So we've alluded to COVID a lot and the impact that has had on our environment with supply chain and the availability of goods, the availability of the workforce to even provide those services as well. Hayes, I'm sure can jump in with more specifics, but in each of the years that we've had a surplus, we have then come to you with a recommendation on how to use that. The first year out the gate, we recommended that we defuse some of our debt, which basically means pay it off, pay it off early. The benefit of that is your debt millage goes down, and it saves in the interest expense over the remaining life that that debt would have been outstanding. We did that one year. I think last year, we came before you and said, look, we have a lot of facilities that are kind of defunct. We've not kept pace with the maintenance on those. They've been in a state of disrepair. Some of them, for example, fall under our Parks and Recreation Division where there were pools that needed, in each instance, upwards of $3 million per location. That was one of the recommendations. Another that Jared and Councilmember Rodman, when he was on board, asked for was that we take some of that surplus and put it in a design pot so all of these road issues that we are having with 170 and 278 can be addressed. And those design costs are very expensive. I think we put roughly $6 million aside for that. In addition, we asked for things like EMS equipment, ambulances, mannequins, various and sundry things that were needed by that department. We put in excess of a million into the detention center so that maintenance needs that have gone unaddressed for a series of years were able to be addressed, such as HVAC units, paint, flooring, furniture that had been sitting there for 20 years. Our newest probate judge has come forward and asked for some of that for her area of expertise as well. So those are some of the things that we have come to you for. They are large capital purchases that have consumed a lot of that surplus. So I don't want you to think that we have generated these surpluses because we've overtaxed. It's been things that have been critically deferred for too many years, and we were not able to complete them within a given budget cycle. We have rolled that forward every year and asked for use of those funds, which we will be doing shortly with the $15 million that Mr. Greenway just referred to last year. One of the ways we'd like to combat that, just from an optics perspective, is to completely separate out our capital expenditures into another fund so that it's not mixed into operations. I think as we do that for fiscal '24, and that year comes and goes, at the end of that cycle, what you will notice is that the operating piece will be very, very close to fully expending what they were appropriated. The flip side of that is whether it's 5, 10, or 15 million that we've needed for the capital piece and whatever that equates to in terms of a millage, if it's three, four, or five mills, will be in a separate capital fund. Practically, as you guys know, sometimes when you have major construction projects, they don't fit nice and neatly into the timeframe of a fiscal year. So it is very important that we separate those out, and that has the ability, when necessary, as it crosses fiscal years. If it's, those funds are not completely expended by June the 30th or shortly thereafter for modified accrual, then we need to be able to continue to expend those to complete those projects into the next fiscal year. I know that was a lot of information. Hayes can add to it, but I'm also happy to answer any questions you might have on the practicality of that.
Sure, I do. I mean, because one of the things, areas that you did. I mean, uh, cause one of the things, areas that you did not even recommend or even consider is to, um, relieve some of the taxpayers of their, uh, burden of paying taxes. So, you know, to me, that's a consideration as well. Um, I would love to see, um, the, the, the capital project, um, listing, you know, because we do have capital projects that we have to do and we either got to issue bonds for it, blah, blah, that sort of stuff. It's better to pay as you go if you can, because it really saved taxpayers over a long period of time. But I, to me, it's, it doesn't save all the time, pay as you go. I mean, you got the funds now. I mean, there are some projects that you could do and, 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 um, and, and pay for it without borrowing the money.
Correct. I thought that you were suggesting that we, that we issued debt for some of those things.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay. That would not save our taxpayers money. There's issuance costs, underwriting costs, interest expense.
I'm looking at saving taxpayers money. We have, uh, reserve, um, you know, and that's why I asked the auditor, um, about, um, the, um, the, the fund balance. And he said, you know, every year they keep going up, or you need to have three months' fund balance, nine, seven and a half months' fund balance and stuff. I guess, uh, it might be a whole year fund balance if we keep going in that direction. Um, do you see what I'm going at? You know, at some point in time, you know, we have to come with a comfortable number to say, this is going to be good for us for emergency, you know, if, if another hu- I mean, not Hugo, but, uh, whatever the hurricane was, Matthew, you know, we have funds that we can actually do the work and then get reimbursed. Uh, and I think that worked well for us at the time. Uh, but at some point in time, I mean, how much do we need to have in reserve and, 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 and then allow the taxpayers to get some kind of benefit from it and still, um, you know?
Um, there's a lot I could unpack there. I do agree with a lot of your statements in that we do need to have sufficient reserves to cover ourselves. As he explained, for a lot of counties, three to four months in your fund reserves are sufficient, but because of where we are positioned geographically and how we are susceptible to storms that require a major, um, outlay immediately following the storm for debris that we contract out to be picked up or just our emergency response, it can consume significant resources very quickly. Um, and so for that reason, we have a greater benchmark in terms of our ratio of fund balance to the operating amount for every budget year. And as your budget grows, then so does that fund balance with it. Um, and in addition to that, a portion of that fund balance in being cash needs to be immediately available. And this also goes back to the earlier question that Councilmember McKellen had about the taxing year and the collectibility of taxes versus the fiscal year. So fiscal year ends June the thirtieth. Ms. Walls has until the end of October to finish collecting taxes that were assessed in November. So for that reason, most of them are collected, as Hayes said, by the end of June. We're probably ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent collected by the end of June, but those remaining three months until the end of that period when they are truly deemed seriously delinquent and start assessing the interest and penalties on top of that are not collected in that three month period. But we can accrue those, there's a sp- and I don't want to get terribly technical right now in governmental accounting, but because of the taxing year in which they were levied, with modified accrual, we have the ability to record those delinquent taxes that are then collected beyond June back into that fiscal year. So because we were able to do that, we are able to have sufficient cash reserves during the hurricane period when we are likely to need it the most, which is June through November. And that's on the tail end of that collection before we levy again and start a new taxing year. Um, so very crucial that we do have a healthy fund balance and a very healthy cash amount of that fund balance. As far as rolling back the millage, we have not ruled that out. I don't want you to walk away from here thinking that we're talking about, you know, employee recruitment and retention efforts through the form of pay increases or other initiatives. We're talking about capital needs. I don't want you to think at all that we have completely, you know, ruled out the rolling back of the millage. That may very well be the case, but by the same token, over the last couple of years, we have been hammered about our facilities. We've been hammered about Green Street. We've been hammered about Gloria Potts and Chuck could kind of go down the list as far as facilities that are in need of major renovation. Additional programming north of the Broad for Parks and Leisure is one of those. Transportation needs is one of those. So it takes money to provide services and it takes people to provide the services. So there's a, as it's been referred to, a very delicate balancing act on what the appropriate level of millage is to continue to have sufficient funds for those things. So I'm not disagreeing with you. I don't want you to think that we have ruled that out. We haven't. All of that will still be determined in the next few months as we have the value of the mill from our assessor's office and we're able to do projections.
Be on the table for consideration.
Absolutely. We are right there with you.
Okay.
Do you want to add anything or?
I think you hit it off.
Okay, alright.
I should just stay where I was.
Alright.
Logan.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Logan.
Um, now piggybacking off of what Eric Greenly said a few moments ago about then talking about health coordinator, um, not sure what lines the ten, fifteen million dollars falls in, but we're talking about health and fitness of our employees as well as our county and our motto. And then you have, um, Councilman Glover talking about giving back to the community. It seems like record to be, um, at least an option to discuss. If, I don't know if those funds are allowed to go for that under the rules, but we just listed it on the county council, we need twenty seven million dollars, we need girl and drag counters. I don't know what's allowed to be played with with that money, what's not, where it can move to, but it seems like a good jumpstart to make up some areas that we've lost on if that opportunity presents itself.
Yes.
And it hits a lot of nails on the head.
Yes, uh, very good segue. That is, uh, going to be covered in the afternoon sessions, uh, with, uh, the final session being on Parks and Recreation. So we will be asking for y'all's directions on how y'all, you all would like for us to deal with some of these issues. If you all, uh, Councilmember Cunningham, I don't know if you have that, uh, presentation, but if you all will look at this particular sheet of paper right here, there are some important agencies on this list that I need your feedback on, because typically we get into the budget, uh, cycle and folks start asking us a bunch of questions about what we're doing with this and what information we can get from that, uh, agency or whatever. If you all want information, I would like to go through this list now, give you what we know and have y'all give me what you would like to know whenever we turn that budget in for the first time. So we're not going, having to go back and try to, uh, gather information. We can go ahead and get it now, uh, so we'll have the answers. So the first four on the list, Technical College of Low Country, University of South Carolina, Beaver, Beaver Memorial, Beaver Jasper Comp Health. As Hayes said, that's, that allocation is pretty much set by millage. Uh, that is in the presentation. Those formulas and the amounts are in the presentation that Hayes did earlier. Uh, historically, we have been asked, uh, to get additional information about the Fourteenth Circuit Solicitor's Office and the Fourteenth Circuit Public Defender's Office. If you all would like to know anything, I would like to have that direction today.
What, what do you mean by that? If we would like to know?
If there's, if there's like things that you want to know in detail about money being expended, who's been hired, what previous allocations have gone for, anything like that, I would like to have that information so we can go ahead and work, begin working now with those folks so that we can have that information available when we present the budget to you all.
So what's the template that they, those two agencies would normally use? That, don't they make a submission knowing that this is the cycle? Doesn't something come in automatically from them?
It does.
So they have a template set up?
Right.
Okay, so we would be able to look at that template from last year?
Right.
And see if there's any adjustments we'd like to make? And what's the deadline for the, getting that information to you?
Uh, the deadline for that information is already passed. I'm not sure if.
From us? No, not from them. From us, to ask for additional.
Oh, um, just before we, but within the next thirty days, if at all possible, so we can get the answers from them before we present the budget.
So they have submitted something already and you have that?
They should have submitted something already, but I'm not sure they have. Okay, sometimes you have to go back and ask. They have not.
Neither, neither agency has, neither department, solicitor or public defender. So when that comes in, we could see that as you're considering it as well, to see if there's anything there that we may want to specifically request in addition to what they've provided, right? It's not a secret document, right?
It's not classified.
Donald Trump doesn't have it in his house.
And if I can just add to that, um, obviously.
Delaware two.
What's that?
Delaware two.
That's right. We have to cover both parties.
I, I think, um, as county council, we have the right to ask for whatever information is in our ordinance to do that. So things that, that we've missed in the past have been what kind of funding they're getting from other counties, cause again, both of those are part of a five county, um, uh, group. So we want to know what the other five, four counties are, are paying, what kind of outside money that's coming from the state so that we can look at it as well. Um, and then it, it'd be more difficult to figure out what the caseload is and what percentage in Beaufort County is, more population, so we have a larger percentage, what the percentage of caseload is for Beaufort Counties, then we can look at the other counties that are putting money in. Um, those have been the things that have eluded us in the past and to know what our fair share is, because we've always looked at it and went, wait a minute, it looks like we're paying more than we should or paying for other counties for, for their share of things. So however we can put that together, those are things that we, it's gotten better every year. We've gotten more and more information, but, but obviously if we can say this is what we need and allow y'all to get it, that's what we need.
That's kind of the information I'm looking for right now. If you all need that kind of information, we'll see that about something, that's what I would like for you all to tell me before we turn the budget in.
So our finance committee meeting on, on, uh, March twentieth is when we have the outside agencies coming in. And so if you get a list.
What date?
March twentieth.
Okay.
Um, a couple of days before my birthday. So we're going to be having the outside agencies come in and they'll be presenting, if you have a list of questions, additional questions that y'all would like us to have, we can get them to reiterate those, uh, then. So, but some of their presentations are what they've done for the year, not really the nuts and bolts of their budget. I mean, they're just numbers. Seen them, so.
Sometimes it's just, sometimes it's just one number.
Sometimes it's just one number they ask with no breakdown line items.
There you go. And if you all want a breakdown, then I need that direction so I can make that request to the elected official on your behalf.
It'll probably be helpful to look at last year's submission if we could.
Yeah.
Listen, I don't think everybody's going to ask for everything. Some of us may have a special interest in one, two of these things. So we could get that last year's submission to see what it looked like. And if it was only one number, then shame on us.
We'll send it to you.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember.
I have a question then.
Yes.
Kind of for Mr. McKellen as well as Eric. Um, one of the things that we did, I think it was in the spring of last year, was ship funds from the Solicitor's Office, the Sheriff's Department, which is something I reported you on, which is kind of interesting from where we are today. Uh, I wanted to know if we can get the same report we requested from the Solicitor's Office, from the Sheriff's Department, um, there's, uh, people I believe that had to do with DUI, what the prosecutor did with DUI.
Yeah, we can, uh, yes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll request that information for you all, so y'all have it as a part of the budget.
Now, Hayes, you said on March twentieth, all of the outside agencies, whether it's the solicitor or small business, Beaufort Jasper Economic Development, all of those are going to be coming to present their budgets?
We're trying to line that up right now. Yes, sir. Um, we haven't gotten a hundred percent. Some may or may not come. It may not be all. That's why it's, it's a finance committee meeting, but it's, it, it's going to be devoted to that. There, there won't be much business. It'll be more of a budget workshop.
Okay.
Hey, cause while, while you're there, um, I'm, I'm looking at this list right here, Mr. Chairman, and, um, it is based on Miller, uh, the mill. Um, the Technical College of Low Country, over the last three years, increased their funding. The same thing was supposed to happen for Beaufort Memorial Hospital and Beaufort Jasper Conference of Health, but it's not, it's, has actually gone down over those years and stuff. Could you look into that to see why?
Yeah, I can tell you why, I can tell you exactly why, because originally when it was set up, we went to the hundredth of the mill and, uh, we were directed by the auditor to drop the hundredth to the tenth or to the tenth of a hundred. Just to, you can only have one past decimal. So it might've been six point five percent and it went to point six percent. So it dropped that one year and then it came back up the next year is what happened.
When you look at those two entities.
Yes, sir.
Um, and then you look at the universities, I mean, it's, the increase is constantly. I mean, how, how?
I, I mean, uh, uh, so I'd have to look at it individually.
Would you?
We'll do that.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll answer.
Yeah. Okay.
This is the kind of information I'm looking for right now on this list, cause there's a lot of agencies here that we historically get a lot of questions about during the budget process. Uh, Low Country Regional Transportation Authority, that's pretty, that's pretty much never an issue. Island Recreation is historically, uh, an issue. Some people have asked why we're funding, uh, recreation entity on, on Hilton Head Island.
Who, who asked that question? Member of the council?
Mm-hmm.
They've been doing this for twenty years and the people still asking questions about it?
Always get questions, but I'm just, I'm just asking for feedback. If you guys want information, I need to know, I need to know that information right now. I'm not, I'm not taking a position in any way, so.
Just like every other one, we'll get from them a breakdown of what they want, why they want it.
We don't ever get a breakdown from Island Rec. We just give them a straight, one, we just give them a straight allocation every year.
Okay.
We don't, we don't know what that money is used for. We don't know what they spend it on. We just give them an allocation.
I'd like, I'd like to see that. I mean, this is, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
No, that's okay.
But this is when the constituents say, well, you just give out money and don't hold anybody accountable. And I know that's for ATAX, but still, I'd like to know what we're funding there.
Okay, there is, um. You get that every year, by the way. It's a very simple, it's a very simple issue. I don't, I don't know why this has suddenly become such an issue with the Island Rec Center.
Well, um, it's, it's not an issue. Again, we're going through all, the whole list to ask about all the agencies. It's not an issue for Island Rec.
To say we don't get anything from them is not accurate. This is the first time I'm seeing this. Okay, we'll make sure that, uh, all council members get this document.
Yeah, do we get a budget? Okay. Okay. All right, so, Ronald McDonald House, we will not be recommending funding for that?
Yeah, that was my question.
Because the dental bus has been inoperable for two years. Um, and they, they're currently holding two hundred grand of our money in an account. So we've told them that they will need to use that money. And, and once that money is used up, when they get the dental bus operational, then we will consider rebooting their funding. So that'll go to zero, uh, this year. Uh, the Military Enhancement Committee, that is something that is, uh, a committee of the Beaufort Chamber of Commerce. We gave them a hundred thousand dollars last year to help hire a consultant to help with the naval hospital, uh, issue so that we're in, um, a good position if the, uh, DOD decides to do something to close out the operation of the naval hospital. We will probably continue that allocation again, uh, this year because I think that's important.
Right, and I'm going to interrupt you. Just for clarification, for those of you who have just come on council, twenty-three award, we're in twenty-three, but we're ending the fiscal year of twenty-two, twenty-three coming this July. So what we're going to be talking about is the funding for twenty-four for all of these, which is not any amount there right now. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, Beaufort Water and Soil Conservation, that'll, that will not change. Uh, we will talk about Economic Development Corporation, Southern Carolina Alliance tomorrow morning, uh, Low Country Council of Governments, MPO funding, Home Consortium, uh, those are pretty much the standard things. If you need to know any information about that, we're happy to give it to you. Um, and then we awarded Veterans Affairs a hundred thousand dollars. I'm assuming that's because we were expecting there to be some changeover, uh, in the leadership. I'm not sure what that's for, but we'll find out what that's for and I give you all a report on that whenever we do the budget.
I might add one thing, that the twenty-twenty-three haven't been fully awarded yet, but they will be, they were budgeted, but they will be awarded.
Can we get some more information on Low Country?
What you want?
Um, well, we have the Low Country Council of Governments, you know, what is our responsibility to them?
to them? You know, various aspects of that and the MPO funding and the House Consortium, why they're separate funds.
Okay, alright, if we can get that for you.
Thank you.
Alright, I think we might be ready for lunch now so we can break. I'll be around answering any questions for you all if you have any other items you want to talk with me about while we're at lunch.
Okay, we will stand in recess until 1:00 PM.